... We all do this, and we can introduce our guests with the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have prepared for the work the council approved us to act in the role of the economic development plan that has been in place. They've been doing the work. We've already given their first draft to the council. So tonight, Tucson Roberts and Jim Byer are here today to actually give us a briefing on where they've come and brief the council, the council had to ask me a question before we could go to the final draft. This is going to be important to the council. So if you have anything else?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Folks. And as you recall, we introduced this during the plan two. This is a component of the comprehensive plan, the economic development section of the comprehensive plan, getting into looking at potential policies and other areas where we need to shore up everything from incentives to tight businesses, models to recruit. And then finally, one of the most important things is to solidify regional partnerships. And what we've got half up here, the Saturn, which is good. So that was the intent. And I'm going to introduce Jim Byer. He's going to start off.
Thank you, Mr. Byer. And Madam Councillors and Mr. Councilman, how's that?
Good. Don't worry.
It's good to be with y'all this afternoon. I've been before, I've been in front of you before. Tucson Roberts is here. He's the, he's the brains of the operation. I'm the, I'm the eye candy of the operation. I want to start out. It was a joke. It's a joke. It's a joke. We're gonna, we, we, the main thing we want to report to you guys this evening is we spent about a week and a half to two weeks in Anniston several months ago. And I thought I knew a lot about Anniston, and I did know a lot about Anniston, but how cool was it to spend some time here and to talk to your citizens and stakeholders and folks to see what their impression or for them to tell us what their impression of this community was. And so I just wanted to run over real quick and let you know that we held interviews. We were about an hour with these folks, but we talked with Kyle Kofa, with Retail Coach, and y'all know Kyle. You have a contract with him. We talked to Lori, Lori and Eric Wright from East Alabama. We talked to the mayor, of course, and Mr. Folks and O.B. Diddington. We talked to David Arnett, who's the public works director here. Jennifer Green from Jack State who's here. Matt Rosser from Jack State. Dr. Tim Lindblom from Jack State. Carla Eaton, who was y'all's management director. Audrey Maxwell, Calvin County Tourism. Greg Fortner from the Housing Authority. We talked to Pam Johnson and Tony Bishop from Gairs, Gairs, Gadston. That's what you said. That's what Gadston State and Ayers Campus together, but from Gadston State. They jointly run the Gads, y'all's campus. And then Chris Howard and Philip Posey from Anniston High School. Don Hopper, who's over there from the Economic Development Commission from the county. Olivier Marietta from M&amp;H Vow. Jonathan Schneider from Spire. Terry Smiley and Jackie Lynn Lowry from The Power Company. Lisa Morales from Alabama Works. Alan Robinson from the Anniston Museum. Ed Turner from Anniston Waterworks. And Greg Barker from the EDP. Y'all know Greg was here at one point. So we visited with those folks, and there were several things that kind of continued to come about. And from all of those interviews, you know, the, the, the... We switched that to Jackson. Yeah. All of those interviews, I mean, we talked about community development. We talked about manufacturing. We talked about retail. We talked about recreation and tourism. But there were several things that, you know, bubbled at the top. Education, of course, just kept coming up. Education, public school system, public school system. You've heard this. Most of what we heard, you have heard. From our perspective, perception is a real issue in Anniston. And I don't know how to say it, except just to be honest, some of your folks have this perception that you can't do. And it's just so untrue because you can't, from an outsider, from outsider's standpoint, you have all of the makings, but sometimes maybe you have not succeeded in the past. And so people have this impression that, well, we can't do that. We can't do that. And you're like, oh, yes, yes, you can do that. Recreation and tourism, y'all are one of the areas in our state that, that is just such a positive. And the Chief Ladoga Trail extension, we were actually here when y'all voted to extend the, what, five or six mile section from where it ends down to, down to the railroad station. And of course, there are people, you know, y'all have heard me say it, I said it, there's those five people that are against everything, and they were against it. But how important that is from a recreation tourism aspect, that that's completed and that the head is actually here in downtown Anniston. Anyway, it was very interesting because, you know, there's a perception that crime is really high. Well, if you scratch the surface, crime is not, it's not, I mean, we've all got crime in all of our hometowns. You happen to have some statistics that show that your crime, and I don't know if the chief's here, but you happen to have some statistics that show that your crime is higher. And if you scratch a little bit deeper in that, you know that you're being, I'm going to say deemed, because you are reporting total statistics and you're reporting the police jurisdiction. And if you take the police jurisdiction out, your statistics, it isn't, they're not really spotty. Well, so there's a perception. Anniston is such a, you know, oh, it's so, it's so, so dangerous in downtown Anniston. Then you talk to somebody, and I'm not going to call her name, she works for you, she has an office in downtown Anniston. She's a single person with a single office, and she's in downtown Anniston all hours of day and night and doesn't report that there's crime. I mean, doesn't, you know, you talk to Dr. Lindblom, and he talks about, he's, you know, the Bike Association has an office down there, and no problems to be mentioned of. I mean, there are all, there's crime everywhere. So that's one of those perception items that sometimes people say, well, this, but it's very interesting because your citizens, the people we interviewed, were also very, you know, one person said they were excited to live, work and play in a city that cared for all of its citizens. And so then you dig a little bit deeper in that, you say, well, what do you mean by that? And say, well, we're the, we're the, you know, the county city. And so we have to deal with some homeless folks. We have to deal with some folks with mental issues. And other communities don't have to deal with that, but our city has taken something that is costing them, but they care. Well, that's a pretty, pretty good statement for someone, for a citizen to say, in my opinion. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Tucson kind of go over the bad, I mean, because I can ram along a lot, but Tucson's got some bad updates, and I'll help them with that.
Okay. Let me...
Which slide, Jim?
Let's leave it on this one for right now.
Yeah, those are the folks we talked to.
These are the people that we talked to, the organization. And when we first sat down, whether we tell them, we need to talk to you about Anniston. And there's a translator, uh-oh. Uh-oh. I said, well, we're not going to tell anybody what you said. And then they said, well, let's talk. So that's the way it worked, and it worked really well. And I will say that as we got through this, everybody was saying kind of the same thing. So there was a lot of agreement with these folks. And there was about 30 people if you add them all up. So I just wanted to, to let you know how that started and how it... We, we normally spend about three months doing this. We started this in January. So I know Anniston, I think better than I know Carolina, for a long. And one other thing, there's no city, and I've done about 30, 35 of these from West Virginia to all the way up to Texas. There's no perfect city. So every single city has problems. So when we point them out, just understand, well, another city's got something else that maybe they can do better. Okay. Got it. I wanted to, I wanted to just briefly look at this. This compares you to the, your eight county region, Alabama in the U.S. It, it does population, but over here, this is the cost of living data. Average annual salary here, cost of living's 84% of the national average down here. So your, your cost of living's low, but the wages are not as high as, as Alabama. So, next slide. All right. I don't know why that's crooked and wavy, but we'll just deal with it like that. What we did is we looked at 42 different items, and they go all the way down from utilities to business, transportation, go to the next slide. And we go to quality of life, economic development, infrastructure roads. We try to cover everything that you could possibly imagine in town with 42 of them. That's what our analysis consisted of. The interviews were not everything, so understand that. We got data from Jennifer Green over here, and we matched the interviews with the data to kind of find the truth. A lot of people have perceptions, and perceptions don't match the data. The data is usually right unless something's changed since the data came out. We didn't find much of that. Okay. All right. Here was the weaknesses. And the first one, you can't help it because you don't have a room. So you got an economic development weakness because you don't have a force. But there's a way to solve that if the needs here, and I'm telling you, in Montgomery, they're doing a, the Forest Authority is doing a port, a truck to train for with the attention of the mobile. You can do the same thing if the need arises. Right now, you can't do anything about it. It'd be up to the industry or the Forest Authority to do it, or TDA or somebody like that. But it is really your only economic development weakness right now. You know, back, back there. Okay. Business and political climate is good. What we do need is the Chief Ladaga Trail is, when you extended it like that, you've created something really special. And I've dealt with bike trails up in West Virginia and Maryland, and if those things, once they get known and advertised, I mean, it creates all kinds of business. Hotels, restaurants, so that's going to really help your downtown. And I, I hope that you will support a regional effort. We'll talk about that a little bit later. The One East Alabama Power and some of your local partners are putting together a One East multi-counties and nine, nine-county economic development effort. You need that, and I urge y'all to participate in that. And Don knows about it, he's involved in it. But what it does, if, if, if Don wants to go to a trade show and develop a prospect, you can do it as a group, and where he said he couldn't afford to do it, all of you can afford to do it. So it's a, it's a really good organization, and I urge you to support it. It's not done yet, it's still being created. Education, we got a problem here, and this is more than a perception. The K-Tale, K-Tale 12 system in, in Anniston is in the bottom 50% of all the school systems in the state. That's not good. We'll talk about that in just a minute, how to fix it. Quality of life, you've got a perception that Jim had mentioned with the crime here. And this is a problem because the crime statistics, if you, if you go ahead to FBI and you download it, it looks like, oh, this is about, this is about flat, something's wrong here in, in Anniston. But when you take, as, as Jim said, the police jurisdiction out of it, it comes down to something approaching normal. And in fact, with six of the 10 categories, you are below the national average. So you got, you got a problem, a little problem and a big perception. Maybe that's a good way to put it. But I would support the police team to give you more resources if it were needed. Next one. Okay. We talked about education. You've got, you've got the Ayers Campus in Gadston State, and then you've got the Jacksonville State. They've served the existing business really well. I mean, we, Jim and I both went and interviewed. Those folks have their handle on what the business needs, and they're doing a really good job of meeting what the business wants. I give them kudos for that. It's better than most cities that I've, I've looked at. Also, you've got the Oxford School Board announced a Create Center, Work Center, and they're, they want to cooperate with y'all as well. And that's a big deal. It's $95,000 per year. It's, it will help everybody if we can find a way to participate in it. Okay? Okay, here's some unique things about this town. Your labor force. You got, you've got here manufacturing, I know you can't see that, it's blurry, healthcare, retail and accommodations included. That is about 58% of your whole economy. And if you look at manufacturing on a national level, it's like 8%. You've got 21% under there. You've got a manufacturing town here, and that's why those... And a health center town right there. That's next. That's why those colleges are so critical to the health of the city, because they're supporting your industry directly and doing a darn good job there. Here's another thing that was odd, and I'll show you after, after this slide, I'm going to show you why. About 30% of your people are commuting into Anniston from the outside. So when you look at, y'all are the leaders of Anniston. You look at Anniston as a, as a city, a complete city, but it isn't, because you've got all these people coming in and leaving every day. And you, you need to understand that, that we are a large community. Okay, go to the next one. All right. Here's, here's Anniston 1530 and 45 minute drive. See the little dot in the middle? Right there? There you are. That's where we sit. But look at where the labor comes from. Look at that. That's Georgia. That was very interesting to me. I don't usually see that on a city this size. So, and they're coming, obviously, to work in your manufacturing industry, because that's where the money is. So that's a good thing. It also bodes well for the future for retail on the level of dollars. All right. This is a, this is a, this is something, and I don't like to be academic about stuff. I like to be simple about stuff. But this is a key sign here. A location quotient is, the location quotient for this industry, plastic manufacturing, in the United States is one. Okay? All these location, location portions are one for the whole United States. Look at this. Plastic products, you're a 10. Transportation, look, you're a 108. That is so bizarre. You know, maybe in Anniston and Huntsville, that's something like that. But it, it's just really odd, and that's why your colleges are training people the way they do.
Odd and positive.
Odd and positive, yeah, it's good. They're well attached to it, but that's why they, that's why they know, that's why they're engaged in this. And look, look at the wages there. They're pretty good. Instead of your average wage is $42,000, look at the manufacturing wages. Look at that one. So what's important to have that many good companies in this town. And I was, I was a bit surprised when I saw that. Okay? All right. This one is, this one's real simple. What I did is I, we shaded it here by density. So you've got four counties in this eight county region that have almost all the jobs, 88% of the jobs. And look at you, you're the leader. 15,000. That's why all those people are coming in. Uh, no. Okay. And look at transportation equipment, transportation equipment, transportation. Look at the number of jobs you've got there. It's tremendous. And to say nothing of Talladega, you're heavily into transportation there. A good thing. Okay. Next one. All right. This is going to help out. What, this is what you have. These are NAC's numbers, which are classifications of different industries. Every one, every industry has a different industry. Okay? This is what you have here in manufacturing. The gray ones are industries that line up with those. So what I'm saying is, if you go out and you want to recruit to labor skills, and what you have here, these are potential recruits. Now, go to the next one. I've got even more interesting than that. This is regional, and I got this from Chattanooga. And I was telling Donna a while ago, Chattanooga has no more space. They're completely out of space to put industries. So what they've done is they have looked at a service area, and we are right in it, right there. And they have identified the industries in that service area that are recruitable. And you can see they've done it by dots, so you can see, for instance, aerospace in blue, you can see where it is. We're right in the middle of all that. So it's a really good target for these clusters. So Don, do what you will with it, but it's, it's really good. It's a good target. Okay? All right. This is probably the most interesting slide of all for me. This is the out shopping patterns for Alabama counties. You can't see that, so I'm going to have to tell you what it says. Just trust me. Here we are. Okay? That says 1, 4, 3. And then the red one says 1, 2, 9. Okay? The purple one is 2014, and the red one is 2022. What's happened is you, I'm talking about the county, have grown as a retail center. If you have a, an out shopping pattern number, more than one, you're getting more people to come shopping. You're getting 43% more money in different taxes than you have population. So 1.4 is really good, and it's increasing. So that's a very positive, and that includes the whole county. But it's, it's very positive. And you can look around here, and you can see Randolph County down here is .77. So you know where those folks are shopping, and that's just coming here. And every, everyone around you is not nearly as high as you are. So that's a, that's a very positive trait. All right. Here's the other one. This, this one surprised me as well. You expect this on the interstate. This is traffic counts, okay? 33, 37, 39, 37. You know where else you'd find it? Right down Quintard. That's hardly, you can look at it, 34, 35, 35. It's just like the interstate. What a good place for retail. Now, y'all have, had employed a group called Retail Coach, and I didn't get in to identify different retailers. That's, I didn't want to step on what these do, but you've got, you've got a really good opportunity for retail down Quintard. Any question, do you have any questions about this? That circle is your eight county region.
Tucson, one thing on the retail, and you and Jim and I talked about this, it's something that we, and I talked about the city manager and the mayor and the council, we worked this every day, and it was, you know, we, we are in an Anniston, Oxford, Jacksonville retail market. So what's key is for each city to recognize the niche businesses that it needs to pursue. Like, for example, the, the niche businesses are out in the interstate that are more appealing to the larger shopping centers. So focusing on businesses that have an appeal to a downtown core, or if you will, a secondary or tertiary highway system like Quintard or 431, and then having those locations. So that's very key into that analysis, and it also helps you further understand those numbers of where the people are shopping and what type of goods they're shopping for in that eight county area.
Look, look at here, too. You look at old Houston County down here, 1.83. They're getting people from all over here to shop there. You would think maybe Huntsville would be, boy, what a retail center that is. Well, it's in eight suburbs. You can see it's less than what you get at 1.2. So you're just, you're just really in this space here. Okay. All right. I just threw this one in to give you an idea of how you improve. If you get a red number over here, it's a good thing. That means, that's your surplus. All right, this is 2017, and they haven't done one since then. But you have increased this even more over the last few years. And I mean, it's, it's just great news. I don't know where else it happened in the city. So whatever you got wrong with the city, you got that right. Okay. All right. Jim and I came up with some recommendations, and we touched on a few of them, but Jim and I can go to them again. The Chief Ladaga Trail, it's novel and exceptional, and it's getting to the, to the point that it's large, and it's going to be a draw, and it's going to downtown, and you can't maintain the whole trail. It's going to take the region to do it, and there needs to be some sort of formal arrangement with that region where everybody benefits, and it needs to be probably initiated by Anniston since you're in rural. And I'll tell you, I'll tell you a funny story in Maryland. When I was up there, I stayed at a hotel, and it, it was, there was nobody in the parking lot. So I go in and ask the lady, and she said, you've got the last room. I said, what? There's nobody in the parking lot. It was all full of migrants and writers, the whole hotel was. And you can just offer that trailer, and you can do the same thing here. I expect that to happen. And then we talked about the One East Economic Development Organization. That's something that is regional as well, and it needs to be supported, and Don, Don's a member of that, but it, it needs to have y'all's input in Anniston. Here's the other one. And we got, we got this when we talked with those. It's not, it's not Anniston against Oxford. You may look at it that way, but it's not. If you, if you go above $30,000 and it was down, and you look at Auburn and Old Lake, they have the same relationship. Or you look at the, the five cities up there, they have the same relationship. So you're really one community with two city halls. So we need to find a way for y'all to get together every so often and let everybody know what's going on in your part of the community and try to cooperate where you can. I, I just think that's essential. Tuscaloosa and Hopeport have the same arrangement, but they get together to talk about it. Now, at least I didn't know if they do. They do now. So that's a recommendation that I, I hope you'll pick up and run on. This one here, this is, this of all the problems, this is the biggest one, in my opinion. And it's not up to the school, just up to the school board. You, whatever, whatever an industry locates or somebody's transferring in, I'm just going to tell you how the world works. The female in the family gets online, and they look at one of these nationwide sites that make school systems. And so they're going to send their kids to the best school system. Most of the time, the husband and niece are thinking what's going on. But that's the way the world works. And they're going to get online, and they're going to see this, and they're going to want to send their kids to another school system. Either around the area or homeschool. So this is, this is not a problem that's unique. There are some ways to conquer this with magnet schools, STEM students, charter schools. It's something that is bigger than the school board, I think. I think y'all need to get involved with the school board and talk to them about, let's see what solutions to solve this problem and bring it up. Because it's not going to go away, it's just left alone. All right. This is, this is the last slide. You've got an airport out there. You've got an airport out there that has a seven thousand foot runway. You know how rare that is for a city this size? It, it, it won't happen. It's really a, a unique physical structure out there that would cost you twenty million dollars to duplicate. It's not being used to the fullest. And one thing that, and I talked to your engineer. One thing that needs to be done out there is they need to go out there and identify a ten or twenty acre site out there that has access to the runway that can be marketed. Because some things will not go anywhere but an airport. If you're maintaining planes or you're, you're going to bring a Delta Airlines in here or something and they're gonna, they're gonna do maintenance on aircraft, they've got to have that runway. And that's a commercial sized runway. I think it's not being utilized to the fullest. Okay, another thing. You've got, you've got a booming downtown area and I was really surprised at how much it has grown since you instituted the downtown development, Main Street. It's, it's really done well. It'll do better if we can find a way to get some of the law departments on the second stories of those buildings where they're, the whole top of the building that they got. That's a, that's a problem and it's usually a zoning problem, it's usually a city problem. If you can find somebody who wants to do it, try to help them do it. Because once you get people living down there, full time, you've got all kind of retail business down there twenty-four hours a day. It's just a, it's just a much better environment that will help the town grow. And it's, the downtown looks nice, it's well kept. But that's something you can do right now to, to help it even do better. All right. This one, this crime, you mentioned that. These, there's ten, ten county rankings or ten federal rankings. And I, I mentioned four of them are right up at the margin of high or just slightly over it. The rest of them are less. So that's a problem. This is part of the solution. The homeless, mentally ill, it's ongoing and that's part of the solution. The other part is with the police and it's, it needs something to do with it. So it's mostly a reception, but it is, it is higher than average. Okay. All right, that's, that's our, it's a closed slide and it has nothing to do with me other than I said tattoo removal will become a growth industry beginning in twenty-third. Do you have any?
Unless y'all have any questions.
Yeah.
I mean, this is information, I think this is information, y'all. In talking to the mayor, in talking to Mr. Fox, in talking to Ted, this is probably information that's not new to you. It may be resurfaced, but you might guess as her is concerned, because you're out there with these services.
To, we sent Toby a copy of the report itself. This is just a real broad brush. The report's thirty something pages long. So I made it easy to read during our, around academics, where you can have all the people. We like to actually be easy to use, so it doesn't have a lot of academic standards in it. It's very direct and it's got a lot of charts on it, these are some of them. So it may take you thirty minutes to read it, but it will, it will give you a pretty good idea of what we've done and how you can use it.
Any questions or comments?
Well, what did we do to change, well, two, two questions. How can we change the perception? I mean, I had on social media and I said, we're being hammered.
Oh, yeah.
And invite people that grew up here and they're looking back in time at when we had forty-one thousand population. And they said, it's so sad, I can't stand you to come through here. And so I, I'm at a loss as to what we do. I feel like we're doing as much as we can. Another thing, when I first was elected in two thousand twelve, I met, I talked, we talked about the police jurisdiction. And I met a former police officer who said the first thing he would do is pull the PJM, you know, south three miles. And then I investigated it and I found out we would lose a few million dollars by doing that. You know, because we were getting a certain amount of taxes and right now my mind is not exactly clear exactly what we're getting. Uh, but it was not feasible to do that at the time I was tough. But do you have specific things that, are we doing all we can or what, what do we need to do?
There's a, there's a chart in there that, it is a bill chart. It's one with the police jurisdiction in it and it's one with the out. Okay, it goes over every product, makes them twice once you're there. What I would do is try to promote the city limits. I mean, just promote it. I'm not saying you have to give up the police jurisdiction, but just say, well, it was city limits. This is what we are. The, the misconception here is exactly right, because I heard it before too. Some of the people we interviewed, uh, said it was high. It is if you just look at the federal chart. But I mean, you've got to get the truth.
You know, when people talk about, and I had, one of my people I interviewed said, downtown Aniston is, oh, it's just never gonna, it's just... And then you go talk to Carla and she can tell you, there's so many businesses that are open. There are black owned businesses, there are open and traditional, um, white business districts. Tourism is there, restaurants are there. There, there's a lot of really grand spots that are open that draw people in. So the perception is just in that aspect does not match that it's a, I mean, we ate downtown. The Ratty Roll, I don't know who owns that and the owners in here, I don't know, but that to me, I'm not a, I'm not a, I don't play pool, but it's great lunch spot.
It's awful.
And that's right in downtown and so it's not, it's not, that's the tough part. And that's where, I, I know Jackson does a Yodlin's job, it's not much to pass about, but that's it. That's, you gotta just, that's it.
And I thought you guys, you guys...
I know you're, so we gotta, we gotta support the police. They're doing the best they can do. Yeah. Just American Council of Republicans, we're moving, and I thank y'all so much for everything. Just to let you all know, as we're talking about police jurisdiction and all those things, with the downfall coming to y'all, of all these things, what, for the primary business in this council, what we've already started to do is get some dialogue, start a few off so we can add this council. But there's, there's factors that we can work with and other things that we can do with government research that Bruce has talked, good, uh, jurisdiction. There's things that we're talking about, just like we did coming in the plan. So many things that were in that coming in the plan, you all already know. And it's just like this plan right here, a lot of things that the ball is already rolling. If you're all in progress with y'all. So as you mentioned, the next week or two, you're gonna start seeing some of these things addressing this thing already and some of these things you're already talking about. Uh, so as we move forward, already this just opened eyes for you think, there's patients, you know, that's one of those things. We, we, we can, that, that's one of those things we can. But all this other stuff, we already working on that actually comprehensive plan. This thing has helped us out so much. But all these things that address it, but you can see a lot of the things that are there already. But what's gonna happen, happen is we're just gonna have to continue to talk about the good, the good, the good. We're talking, it's not a bad thing to proceed. And if you look at all those people who actually said, maybe saying, a lot of times the same old problem as doing the same thing, it's not the best. But it's just because we gotta know we're talking about the police, it's a thing that we're coming in. Because if you have a thing outside of parks.
And we can give a two signage here, but any suggestions, right?
Yes, sir.
Sure, we're the final.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all. So.
Okay, I assume pretty great self-planatory routine, what we're going to say. We said agenda nine, we got two out by myself case, both of them, seven to nineteen issue with either of those two items. All right, we, we get, the flood control ordinance is on the promoting agenda tonight, but it's, it's on the first reading. We can take that, that's our first meeting. Uh, Mr. T, me specifically, I, I think we've been providing that in Dropbox, the floodway.
Yes, sir. That's, that's, that's providing, that's how Steve, we really, I know that's something, all we can pay is actually not, Bruce was doing it, so it's more, and then he moved forward. Yes, sir.
Again, it's on the first reading tonight.
Yes, sir.
We can do it in there as well.
I haven't read about the flood control ordinance. We, we were asked to do this, to change, that changes.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, I read the ordinance, it's so long, I kinda lost it. Is there, are there specific changes that we need to know about that?
No, ma'am, it, it's just how Steve, it's really not a specific change. It's just one of those things they had to say, this is required, this has to be.
Pretty sure.
Pretty sure.
They're really good.
Right.
Any other flood control research? Okay. Uh, the entertainment district ordinance, you know, but it's on Dropbox, any questions on that? First, it's not on me, Jim.
No, sir, so it's one of those things, I want y'all to start to look at it because it got sort of confusing. If Jackson, Connor, Barbara, again, we charge you this, does this make sense? Is it, is this worth charging something? If, if somebody has a business, let's go on and just keep, not charge anything, it could be a bar. But it's one of those things that we're sort of confusing people and we're talking about pennies that, that, that was confusing people more so than necessary. So we look back, let's pull some of this stuff out, sort of, if it was gonna make sense.
Yeah.
So that's all that.
Basically enrolling them all into the entertainment district at one time. It makes more sense and it makes it business easier. This will come with signage that we'll have placed on the outside of the buildings to make sure everyone knows the rules too.
Sir, by taking what you did, we'll, we'll take it up in some kind of a lot. Uh, item six is only considering it's the first of policies, procedural, procedures made when they're not machines here, any?
Yes, sir, this is, this is, this is one of those things, we're talking retaining employees. This is one of those things that we put in place to actually take their employees and it's, it's giving a long-term debate. You can see how much it is not a whole lot. The impact will only be about eighteen thousand dollars in a budget. But this has not been thought of, been up since Tom Wright was the actual city, uh, city manager. So it's one of those things that affect technically employees and employees will max out.
Five hundred dollars or four?
Six hundred dollars, that's the whole thing, we'll level again one time. There's one time payment that's given in December, a long-term payment. So it's one of those things we said to help retain employees, it's one of those things that, it's not, it really costs, it's, it's costly.
Any issues, questions about it, it's on the sending. Sorry, all the other items we said again, that is the major legislation, Memphis for F S twenty-four. It's routine asking as well. But again, that's all on Dropbox, you know, considering, any questions, issues with item seven?
I think it proves, it shows just what she's doing. If you look at that general fund, y'all see the general fund, you know, this, this, this year, if you look at, we actually, oh, the general fund. So the general fund has went up at this time. So if you look at, look at any, any of y'all, that's the cause of the places that she's putting waste to actually make sure that these things happen. I think that's good, thanks for bringing it up to it. Okay, check out phones.
All right, so we can add your case.
Just a couple of things I wanted to give to the council, talk to council about is the, uh, we surfaced in the fourteenth street. Again, we surfaced fourteenth street and we looked at, we only came down to Moore and stopped there. But if you look at all the activity that comes in Park, we have the Y M C, there's no, you know, fourteenth street. What we're asking is that we can actually take this fourteenth street from Moore, always noble street to include an intersection of, of noble street and make it look a lot better than, than Tyler. Because in Park, that's sort of the activity, the roadway for the big way it is and we can think about that first. Uh, that'd cost about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that's also included, two intersections. If y'all saw, seen the intersection at eleven, we're talking about making three-way intersections look that same way. It, it, how to look down there. We can't do noble street, but if you look at how that looks, how that park looks, that's fine. And we've talked about doing tenth, cause all the work we've done on tenth street. We're talking about the twelve, where the city hall is gonna be and also there on fourteenth street. All that will look, that whole thing, that crosswalk and everything, can, with the day in there. I think it would look so much better and that would cost total two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And Commissioner Wilson has committed seventy-five thousand dollars to that. And we have the funding and I pray for the action to that. So if the council was looking at, we just need to move forward, we got the estimate, so we move forward and we're gonna get the council to be.
All right, sure.
Say again? Because if we just, now, we just, if you wanna add that in, that's another twenty-five thousand. We're just trying to do a main, because if you look at tenth, all the work that's been done on tenth street now and then you look at the market, then all that's on, that's on, uh, uh, eleven, that's already done. And if you look at twelve, that's where the city hall is coming to and we're getting rid of that actually. Y'all gonna see some work being done around that park, so we can park it, but we can put a nice fence around it that's, that's conducive to what we got at the, uh, twelve street park and actually make that look about that as well. So that's why we wanted to have that, that intersection there and the city hall opens as well. Now thirteenth and we wanna do thirteenth, that's, that's twenty-five thousand dollars extra, that's up at the council.
I'm with you, I, I think that's, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We, we have the funding, so we'll, we'll, that'll be a part of it as well.
I mean, I, I don't know, see. If, now, you were saying, A, B, ten, you know, we're talking, I'm talking about one, it's one stretch. If we're gonna deal with this, not to see one out, I mean, if you have, if you have the mind, I mean.
We got in front of the music, we can finish this. So that was, what you see now, that's what we're working two fifty, but we, we can add.
The level, that will necessarily include what everybody says is the, 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 the. But we wouldn't do that, I don't, I don't think it's one of the ones. I don't, I don't either, I don't.
Good morning.
Can we simply looking, Jack, for the night?
Simply light it all up.
With that seventy-five thousand, Commissioner, that's a lot.
And we really appreciate that, so the county's gonna be a part of that.
What do you like? Looking at the business. And the last thing is, I don't know if any of you have been out to the microchip part, that, that the restroom that's out there, where we get rid of the opening dock tray. But the restaurant is approached, they have, that's been done to them since we opened it. You know, have been a form of, hard, I feel embarrassed myself because I hadn't been in there in front of a while. But we got to do something like this, to come home and shut, people are coming, anybody's coming out there showering. So what we're looking at is that, uh, actually redoing the plumbing and everything that, that, that restroom and actually, and y'all saw that we saw the rendering, this is a rough trend. Actually just redoing that whole bathroom and actually getting rid of that, uh, deal out there and getting that sort of looking proper when we actually open the dock tray, we can have something that's still dry. We have our security cameras out there, we're looking at those, that restroom, so right now if people come from lab or somewhere, when that restroom does not do Aniston way. So we have three hundred thousand dollars that are there actually for this. That three hundred thousand dollars is out and that twenty, twenty-two bonds of that one that they have to do this. And if we just get some confirmation that we can start this work so we can actually get that so more people can go there and use that bathroom. And we're also looking at things like actually putting the pads out there, the outlets out there so everybody doesn't have to come in and use that bathroom. Maybe lock that, that, those showers will be locked out. Only people gonna be able to use the showers, if you rent the, uh, the camp sites out there, you can actually go and get into the shower. But right now is, you know, we're not just actually doing, you got people sleeping on benches out there. We just got to do something better out there if we're gonna bring people in there and then, like you said. We already got a brand that's coming in place, it's actually just take that outside, actually do something for the walk with. But if we get this done, I think it'll be first, it's not something we suffer, have to be proud of. We have the funding available, so I'm just asking the council that we can move forward and actually get it out, make this thing work.
You agree with that? Can we speak in what they talking about over the main floor?
If we, that's the main part, that's the, that restroom, this, I, I, we have that analysis about the restroom because it's been in South Madison, we put it on the South Madison and we put it on. I think a lot of council, we, the place where we put the, we put it in South Madison and, and Washington Park, we built it almost the same place where the restroom was before, when they tore it down. Because it was Saturday, Tuesday, uh, too many people tearing it up. And that's the same thing happened way apart. So when you look at what we're gonna put there and have that conversation, but I think we may have words with it. But what we're gonna put there, if, if we put it there, that's the same thing happened at, uh, the, in, in Washington Park. We had to lock it up and let somebody, the same thing is in Park, because what exactly did? They came in even at, at, at Washington Park, tearing the building off, off, off the wall and things like that. That's why it's not gonna open when the people are actually ready. That's why we, we, we can just, and we can't open them up. But if we put something out there, put something out there, so, but it can't be opened unless somebody's ready now. Right. That, that'll go the same way, where that's why I guess that's, that's a little bit of a cost factor. But if we have to be very careful on that, because I mean, that, that happened to all of the, 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 like, that. That's why, that, that's why we put outlets in, like the Zen Park, so if the homeless didn't have that for that, but we just can't leave it open like that, or we get it torn up too much. So, uh, and my last thing tonight, I'm gonna share with the council is that what you're gonna find in tax fare is, uh, my, from the, uh, my intention to that. And got, that in there, my intention is to retire on April the tenth of two thousand twenty-five, which would be my thirtieth anniversary with the city of Anniston. And I plan if I wanna do, I wanna do it now and be my wife's advisor soon because I want to, I believe, probably I'm planning to prevent, uh, all performance. This gives the council an opportunity to actually look at who they want to bring in. And I'm interested in the council, like, if, let this happen. Somebody need to be in place either by January, uh, February of twenty twenty-five. That'll give us enough time to transition. What I presume in your package that I give you is the same format that we used when we went through outside chapter four. So what you have for y'all to do is they go ahead and make the changes that you need to make. And then you can actually start working through buyer to get the, the, what you want, the product that you want to be set out. So other, so we can stop this process so we can get somebody in place. I think this is the right time because any projects in the out, uh, that's why I got my mother to watch the joy for tonight because just as I say, I've been thirty years and forty-one years in the army, she's been with me forty, forty-two of those years. I think it's really time to actually go do something, as we always say, that's with people in the city. No, I enjoy what's happened here, but I think anytime is a time to make a transition, I think. The trajectory of the city is so great now that you may need to have an opportunity to make sure we get the right person in place. And they have an opportunity that we can actually have a conversation on transitioning. And therefore, I, I do feel that I have enough time, that the last major project that I do is to move back downtown because I think, uh, looking at that city hall, we'll be in another time, but I think it's time to someone, it, it gets someone else in place. But we don't, we need to wait to the last step. You all have done so much and you're doing so much in this. We need to show people that we have a transition plan in place. Uh, I've already got the staff aware that they understand this now. And keep in mind that, keep what Myra, what Myra does. Myra's bags may go up into the end of October. And if Myra, Myra retired at the same time, I'm telling you, in October. So we got to get somebody in place. So Myra, one of the things is, is y'all get that together and work with Myra on picking up products. And we don't need to have anybody outside of us because we paid somebody to do the same thing, but Myra's getting there to do this. And all you all out of good there, what we need, so we can get somebody out there and start having this conversation and get the right person in place so we can continue to move the city forward. Like I said, I enjoy working this council, I enjoy what you have done, allowing me to be, do what I need to do. But again, I have, like I said, I have a family, uh, talk, my wife, I talk about sometimes, she's the same way that we had a baby and I, I didn't see the baby born, just six months later and she had handled it all by herself. So I just, this, this family right now, I think it's time for, you know, but again, still, the city still will do great things. I think it's a great city. Uh, it wouldn't have it all way, but I think this is the time, you gotta know when, you know, I, I operate off a chemical log, you know, low. And this is time to live though. And so I think that's what, I think this is the time, I think we're ready. But I think this council, we can put the next city manager in place and I think that whatever contracts, no, that city manager, protect that city manager so whoever comes in, whoever happens to protect that city manager. Because we have to understand, somebody's gotta know where we're headed. We don't pass the time, we have not passed the time, we have the grade. I think you guys have done a great job. And I think it's time for the passes to turn right now. So we'll call it four more blocks.
Thank you, thank you. We will, uh, thank you, I'll talk about that, but God bless you both.
Thank you. Thank you for all the, you know, that's the reason.
All right, do you have a standing adjournment?